I guess, ready to go?
Yeah, you got thirty seconds left.
You knew he's a tech guy, right?
Do you, do you, do you have that recording already then? Susan, I think I saw you quick.
That appears to be.
Right. And then this is recording through the cloud, so as soon as it, then we'll look. All right, we're there.
All right, I'm gonna call the Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Can I have a roll call?
Al Blumer.
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Teresa?
Here.
Sue?
Here.
Marie, I know is absent. Holly?
Here.
And Sandy?
Here.
All right, I'll just kind of briefly go through the agenda. Kind of broke it up into communications from the board on various participation in various agencies and with the city council. Our new business, we'll have a presentation from Brian Hanna on modular homes, a discussion about a bare-toothed front community forum proposal, and then we'll have downtown revitalization plan survey results that Cody will present, and then March election of officers, a discussion, and then under old business, we'll have a discussion on Planning Board priority rankings, and then followed, finalized up, will be petitions and communication from the audience and staff communication. So, I don't believe we have any minutes to approve. Is that correct, Cody?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, so I guess communication from the board, Urban Renewal Agency updates. The agency hasn't met really since December, but there is a meeting tomorrow afternoon at 5:30 here of the Urban Renewal Agency. And then City Council representative update, Sandy?
Um, I'll skip the part about the topics for the rankings and just say that we did add some topics such as annexation and de-annexation requirements, procedures. The city council just approved a de-annexation of a portion of a lot up on the golf course. And as far as annexation, we've always had the option to annex in Grandview, Grandview South and Woodlands on Rock Creek, who currently have city sewer. But of course, we need to check the numbers to see if it is cost-effective to bring water to those subdivisions versus the tax revenue that might be generated by bringing them into the city. Right now, the Red Lodge Police Department services these areas for free. So, another topic was building on city-owned land requirements, procedures. The discussion was an MOU versus a lease, and the discussion was whether it was because it was for profit or whether it was because it had a building on it. For instance, the hangars at the airport are on city-owned land, so they're leased, but the owners own the hangars and pay property tax on it. Silver Strike, that complex that's there, is on city-owned land, but they pay property tax on the building. So that's something that we're gonna have to look into, see where we are. We just wanna make sure everybody gets treated exactly the same.
I believe you brought up the observatory as an example.
As an example, 'cause it's a building on city-owned land, but I thought the MOU was sufficient because it wasn't for profit.
Recreation facilities, yeah.
That it wasn't, so those are the types of things that is gonna have to be looked into to find out how that's handled. Other topics, of course, skipping over the multiplex, and we talked about fireworks, perhaps allowing fireworks in the city limits on the Fourth of July between nine and midnight, but we're talking about doing a survey and letting that go to the voters to vote on. Readdressing was actually approved, a resolution at City Council in 2016, and $40,000 was, has been carried over on the budget all these years to readdress. But what would be readdressed is 11th Street would become Mount Maurice and First Street North or Street South, and the people that would have to change addresses on their home would be the people that currently front a street, a numbered street. So, the city council was offered going forward with that. The public works is going to see if the $40,000 was sufficient, or maybe we could get a grant to, to do that, 'cause there's a lot of signs that are gonna need to go on.
Sorry, can I have a question? So Sandy, if, if, I know, I remember sitting in the audience when that was first proposed.
The readdressing?
Yeah. And sat there all this time. What was the issue? Was it there was not enough money or waiting for additional funds?
Public works, it wasn't on their priority list.
It's not in the CIT, you mean, it's not enough?
It, it just, it just was never put on the front of the burner. And one of the reasons that we brought it up again was the police department and the fire department, whenever they have new recruits or new volunteers, they can't find anything 'cause they use Google Maps. So, we happen to be a town that Google constantly locks.
At first, it was a state mandate that we had to comply with the standard.
With north and south, yeah. Yeah, and so it's just gone on and on and on and on. But the city council is, does want to continue to pursue it. We talked about crisis management, what would happen if we had a deep freeze, you know, below zero and the entire town lost its power like Roundup did, the earlier one, and the fire department, the police department, and county DES would actually be the ones that would handle that. And the fire department has the civic center as an evacuation area, but after talking to Serena with, yeah, DES, she felt that the fairgrounds was a better location for a longer, since we don't know how long the evacuation would last.
Already kind of been proven through the flood to be the better area.
It does seem to be, yes. That's why we leave it to DES. There was a discussion that was kind of interesting on the land on the, well, on both sides of Rodeo Drive, turning that into rodeo park and having the rodeo association handling it as an MOU and approving events in that area. Then the city council, of course, would still have to approve it, but right now, it has been through the county and airport board, and it just has been very mired. So, that's kind of in the works. The mayor updated us on Rocky Folkin, what's happening with that. FEMA will cover 75% of the pre-flood value, which is a little bit over 1.4 million. The other 25%, Mr. Mayor has been working on trying to figure out where we can come up with that figure, 'cause it's 366,000 and a few odd dollars. But in kind, apparently, will work, so when we demolish it, we can write that off with volunteer time, and apparently the materials that we recycle, if they go to a 501(c)(3) like Habitat, we can actually have that as a credit as well. So that's still in the works. Airport update, there's a closed meeting May 5th with the airport board, and the city and everybody's attorneys try to get the inter-local agreement solid. And Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary is, right now, everybody has agreed, it's in the hands of the attorneys writing it up. There is going to be a land swap. The land that is outside the bison enclosure but inside the perimeter fence is actually city-owned land and the sewer runs through there, so they're talking about having a permanent easement, since they don't plan to build on it anyway, and then swapping some land at the north end that will enlarge the area for the recycling. So there was a lot on the agenda last night, but that's kind of the gist.
Okay. On the airport, where does the dog park fit into that? Is that?
The rodeo park, it's my belief, although I'm sure that the American update, they would also take over taking care of the, of the dog park, which would be a little bit off of the, off of the city coffers.
So, that was part of the original discussion, and I believe it's part of what the MOU is, or the lease that's currently in place. However, I don't believe that's their ultimate goal, so rodeo park would not encompass the dog park is, is what I think it eventually looks like.
Okay.
I wouldn't if I were them.
Is Park Four taking the lead on formulating what this park would look like?
They're involved in all the discussion on that, so it's in there. We've actually reached out to Cody for guidance and direction on that too, so.
So it's just discussion at this point?
Moving on, Marie's not here to report on county updates. Al?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
First, I'd probably address this when we get into old business, but on the airport update, we already had that on our list, which was kind of comprehensive, the general topic. Is something different, Sandy, than what we had on our list?
I think what you have on the list is, as soon as the inter-local agreement and the boundary is approved by everyone and we're back, you know, on even keel, then there's going to be an airport master plan, and I believe this board spoke to the gentleman who's working on that master plan when we were dealing with the FAA issue in the runway protection zone, and so he's working on that master plan, and I suspect that that will have to come back to this board to go over to make sure that our zoning complies with everything that goes on there, including that RPZ.
Right now, it was number five on our list, and that was more of encompassing, so I think we're okay there, and I'll, I'll address some of these other ones when our time comes on the, under old business.
All right, next on the agenda is Brian. He had a presentation on modular homes.
Not much of a presentation, more of a clarification. So, we got a party that's interested in purchasing the lot on the map that I give you guys, and he wants to put a tiny home on that lot. The way that we're set up to deal with tiny homes in Red Lodge is they'll come in as kind of a modular, so they'll come in on a trailer, be taken off the trailer, and permanently attached to a foundation, so there won't be any chance of recreational vehicle being used or, it'll be, it'll be built like a modular. It'll be bolted down permanently. And so we're just trying to get through the finals of it, that we just wanna make sure that if he goes forward, and I give the building permit to do this, that we're not gonna run into any unknown zoning or regulations saying that it can't be done. We know that the golf course area, Diamond Sea Inspires, they're protected in their covenants and not allow them. I just wanna make sure that in the lower part of Red Lodge, any lot that's available for purchase and vacant, are we okay to allow a tiny home to go onto that lot?
Right, if I, so, so in the HOA, they have a minimum square footage requirement. We were not aware of any minimum square footage requirements from a city standpoint.
Yeah, 5,000 square foot.
I'm talking about the floor plan, not the.
We don't have minimums or maximums in the city, we only have setbacks.
Wasn't it, earlier discussion was whether or not a tiny home had wheels and.
Yeah, and I've, and we've covered that with adopting the appendix, and so that way, the building department is going to control how they're built, which means they have to meet all, all the energy codes, the snow loads, they have to be attached to a permanent foundation. We did that part already, so now it's just making sure that any lot in town here, if, whether it's Cooper or all the way up there on McGillan, if someone buys that lot and they put in the application, do the foundation, we just wanna make sure that it's clear that we're going to allow a tiny home to go onto that lot. And it could, it could progress into more than one. I mean, one tiny home could become the primary, so I'm gonna put another one down as my ADU, and then some of them might wanna build a garage behind it. So, I just wanna make sure before I start issuing building permits on people that are buying lots in town.
Isn't there a relationship between an ADU and the principal business? A principal, yeah, sorry, chemo brain, I'm, I'm gonna apologize a lot for the.
Yeah, the principal structure needs to be constructed first before an accessory dwelling unit is, is constructed, or a garage, or any kind of accessory building is constructed. And that was primarily the result of a couple of situations where people were buying lots and building storage garages on them rather than residences, and so that's why that, that twist in the regulation came, came forward. Al's got his hand up.
Yeah, I'm looking at page 4.48E under manufactured homes on a single lot. Have you looked at that, Brian, in our zone?
That's manufactured, that's different.
Huh?
A manufactured is not a modular.
What it says there is dwelling built offsite in a factory or on a, after January of 1990, placed on a permanent foundation is at least 1,000 square feet in size. I mean, if it fits those criteria, Jeff, I think we're okay?
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to go back and, and look at what we've said in terms of modular homes and.
Because I don't know that we clearly defined the difference between a tiny home and a modular home in our current zoning, have we?
No, we didn't make that distinction. I think the distinction we've made is it has to be on, it has to be on a permanent foundation, whether it's called modular or manufactured or whatever, it has, that's the main criteria.
So, Brian, that's your question, if on page 4.4-8, item E, I think that's pretty clear, and if it fits those criteria, I think we're okay. If it's not, then we got a problem.
Al, you're looking at manufactured home. A manufactured home.
On a single lot, I'm looking at.
A mobile home. A manufactured home is a mobile home built after a certain date, so a manufactured home is not a modular home.
A manufactured home, I believe, will retain the axles and the ability to put the tongue on, and is regulated more by HUD than the building department.
But that, you said that's a thousand square feet minimum, correct, Al?
That's for a manufactured.
That's what it said, that's manufactured, but where here does it have modular, Sandy?
Yeah, and modular is a different, we have a different definition for modular than we do for manufactured. I don't believe that we have any requirements on a modular home in our zoning, in my total memory. A modular home in real estate and appraisal is considered a stick-built home that does not come in on wheels and has very strict building parameters. So, this is a modular tiny home. Yes, they do have manufactured tiny homes, but this is a modular, and as such, I don't believe that we have a minimum for that. We have a minimum on an ADU of 1,200 square feet.
Well, are we picking a net when we say a factory-built housing versus a manufactured housing? Are we picking a net there? Is there a clear difference there?
Wanna explain the difference?
Between manufactured and modular?
Under modular, it says a factory-built housing.
So, a modular home is required to be on a permanent foundation, but a modular home also has to follow all local building codes.
Yes.
A manufactured home does not. A manufactured home can follow HUD or whatever national organization they choose to do the home inspection before it comes in.
But a manufactured home cannot be less than 1,000 square feet.
But that's not a modular.
I'm just trying to figure out the last quote-unquote trailer home that I saw that was more than 1,000 square feet. That doesn't check.
Well, a manufactured home, as Brian says, is, is, the building of it is looked at by HUD, not the International Building Code. A modular home uses the International Building Code, so a modular home will stand up the same as a stick-built home, it's just not stick-built on that lot. A manufactured home is one that's transported in on wheels and built to HUD specifications, so there's a big difference between manufactured, I see Cody bobbing her head, big difference between modular and manufactured. So, we can't use our definition of manufactured here where it says it has to be a minimum of 1,000 square feet, and I don't believe that we made any, any specific things about modular homes because they're basically stick-built homes. If this were not coming in already built, you could build a tiny home on any lot you want on site. This is a modular home that is built, stick-built elsewhere and moved on to this foundation.
Right, there's, there could be instances of these being hauled in, or there could be instances of them being built on site, just like any other stick-built house.
Where the walls are already made and they just put the walls up.
Or, or they do the foundation and build it from, you know, from the first stick up.
Yeah, a modular is the same as a regular stick-built home that you and I have from 1910, built better. Yeah.
Dave?
So, another clarification I wanna add to this, so in the discussions that Brian has had with this potential builder, one of the things that was determined, 'cause at one point they had talked about building this home as a starter and then building on to the back of it, at which case it was raised, then that this really isn't a tiny home, because tiny homes have a different standard for what the ceiling is, and if it's a residential, it's like eight inches higher or four inches higher. So, what, in this particular case, what they're looking at is really a modular home, something that's stick-built, something else, and then transported in, but it's gonna meet the codes, like if they were building it up and were gonna add on to it, because as soon as, as soon as they add on to it, they have to match those requirements, so rather than tearing it down and raising the roof eight inches, just build it that way. So, the tiny home part of this is really nothing, nothing more than the floor plan. It's a modular-built home according to the specifications, it's just whether they build it here or whether they build it there. And the biggest concern was that minimum square footage.
There isn't a minimum in Red Lodge. To start with that, there isn't a minimum square footage in Red Lodge.
Okay, so that's the answer to the first part of the question.
But if they're gonna say that it's a tiny home, if it's a tiny home, you're right, the ceiling is a big difference. If you add on to a tiny home, wouldn't the entire structure then have to adhere?
Yeah, to the IRC, and that's where in this case, like our, our discussions have been, you're not really gonna, we're not gonna classify it as a tiny home and use the appendix to get the cuts here and there that they can have with a tiny home. They're gonna build a very small footprint house according to the IRC, the International Residential Code. So they're gonna meet all the requirements of a 2,000-square-foot house, it's just gonna be on a 350-square-foot.
So we won't call it a tiny home because of the restrictions on a tiny home building? It can, it can be a lot shorter, everything, actually.
But this one is different than possibly the next one, because they are, I mean, this is just one that he wants to get going on it right away. There's lots of calls and emails about wanting to buy a lot in town and put a tiny home on it. There are people looking at getting those, you know, benefits of the 6'8" ceiling height, the loft being allowed as a living area, habitable space, the staircase allowing it to be way smaller and steeper, so this one probably will not be built as a tiny home, it'll be built more towards the IRC, but I wanted to get this out of the way, because the next one might be 100% tiny home.
But it's Jeff? Jeff?
Teresa, then, then I'll come to you, Al.
Sorry, I remember we were discussing once upon a time also that if there was an additive, you know, structure, that the, the principal would be the larger one, or it would be the one that was out front at the curve and the smaller one in the back. I don't know if that, I can't recall if that was changed or not, but are they anticipating putting this further back in the lot and then building the, the larger structure later in the front?
No, they're, I mean, they're gonna place it where they want to on the lot, meeting the setbacks.
And this is the principal.
This would be the first dwelling on the lot, so it would be classified as a principal.
Principal residency.
But are the principals now able to get classified two different directions?
Right, they're gonna make the second one larger than the principal.
Unless they add on to the principal. And since it's not really a tiny home with 6'8" ceiling, it'll be a small footprint. It's basically a really small modular, is what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, or, or a really small.
Stick-built.
Stick-built.
I just wanna clarify the expectation and, and fit, right?
Later.
So they're not surprised later, which is what I'm trying to make sure.
That's why I wanted to get rid of that tiny homes moniker. There is?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everyone remembered that the most recent round of legislation in 2023 actually redefined tiny home, and it doesn't align with the current zoning regs, so, and you have to follow the current statute. So the definition of tiny homes by measurement now is 350 to 750 square feet. So, you know, the Red Lodge regs say 400 or less, but you can't follow that at this point. It has to be 350 to 750. Just wanna make sure everyone was aware of that.
Cody, the IRC calls out 400 or less.
Right, yeah, but, but state statute changed that classification just last year, so I'm not sure how those two are talking together, but that's what, as far as a land use planning perspective, I mean, we're all required to follow statute.
I'll have to find out.
Does the state preempt the federal then?
I don't know.
Which ever's more strict, how about that? But this isn't going to be a tiny home, it's simply going to be a stick-built home that's small.
Small, yeah.
It's gonna be a small, stick-built home that, that's stick-built elsewhere and moved on to a permanent foundation here, and as far as I know, our zoning has no minimum size, like some of the subdivisions have minimum sizes on homes, but the city of Red Lodge has never defined a minimum size, just that a principal residence get built first, and then, in other words, we don't want a garage built first and then the home or an ADU, so the home has to be built first.
Al?
I, I think Cody answered the question I was gonna ask about the 400 feet, so that, that's out. I agree with Sandy, we need to get rid of the tiny home nomenclature in this particular thing, and what I heard was. And what I heard was from Brian that this modular home was gonna meet, um, all the zoning residential standards. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
And the other question I had was, is this the beginning of affordable housing project for this particular home?
No. This, this is, this is their choice to do this. This is them being able to provide and afford what they want to.
It's not rental, it's gonna be a permanent home? It's gonna be, it's not gonna be a rental?
It's not gonna be a rental, though.
They're, they're sitting here, the, the couple interested in doing it. They came to the meeting tonight, so.
And, and I believe, and maybe if they're here, I think there is part of this, and I think it's important as, as Brian brings up these questions, that the plan isn't necessarily that this is a one-off. There is a, this is kind of a, a proof of concept that can be replicated over and over again. It's, it's kind of like, look here, it's been done, you too can do it. So, so that's why I think these questions pertain not to this particular building, but blazing a trail that can be used yet for, for affordable and workforce housing.
And I don't wanna mislead anybody. I, I, we haven't designed this, we haven't, um, gone that, to that step. Um, we may opt.
Find out if we could do it first.
We may opt to do it as a tiny home. Um, so, and I don't know if that's not allowed. Obviously, we'll follow whatever we need to. Um, but, you know, we, we had talked about what's the possibility of putting something on the back of it that's not in the plan.
Yeah, and that's where I said, if you wanna do that in the future.
We'd have to design it.
Don't do a tiny home.
Do a tiny home. We may, as we design it with the, the builders, decide on tiny home, you know, concepts that, um, we would have to adhere to in the future, obviously.
I, I need you to, uh, identify yourself and, and where you live for the record.
I apologize, I'm Adam Milligan, and I currently live in Reedvoi.
Okay.
And I'm Derek Milligan.
What I'm hearing here is we gotta get rid of the tiny home nomenclature on this particular project, and it's a modular home built to city standards. Um, and I assume it's gonna be, uh, in the thousand square foot or greater range. Is that correct, Brian, or not?
No, I don't think we do get rid of the tiny home because, I mean, that's, that's what, that's what they are. I mean, there's a special category for them in the IRC, and they.
Tiny home can be bigger than seven hundred square feet.
Well, I have to clarify with the IRC and the state, because IRC dictates four hundred square feet or less. A tiny home is allowed certain aspects that, that an IRC-built home is not.
Okay, but according to Cody, uh, the, the current tiny home is between three hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty square feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, but again, this is an example where the state and federal are not talking. So, I'm not sure which one's gonna prevail, but I think you have to be aware of both.
So, if you're using the tiny home nomenclature, we have to decide which guideline we're gonna use. Is that what we're saying, Cody?
Yeah, and I would rely on your legal counsel, because ultimately, if you're challenged on it, he's gonna have to defend you.
And Brian, is a tiny home considered manufactured?
It can be, so.
I'm not talking about size, I'm talking about a tiny home that's, that's governed by HUD standards.
It, they can be. There's, there's different ways that they can design a tiny home. They can design them where HUD is the prevailing inspector on it in meeting those requirements. Or, for our jurisdiction, we're treating them more like a modular where they have to meet local regulations and code. So, the inspections will be done per the IRC in the tiny home, not the HUD regulation, which will have to meet all the energy regulations. Our snow load is the big one that we have here. We don't have any other drastic, um, items that have to be met on a house. But the, the roof load on a tiny home will have to be engineered for the hundred-six-pound ground, the snow load. Where if you go to the manufactured side of it, they don't have to meet that. They, they, at any time, can be wheeled up and moved.
Because the reason why I ask is if it's really a, a home that meets the HUD standards, then according to four point four dash eight E, it's now a manufactured home? That clearly states in here that it has to, it's applicable with prevailing standards of HUD. So, if it's actually built as a HUD home, we're gonna treat it as a manufactured home, and the minimum is a thousand square feet.
But it won't be built under HUD.
If it's not gonna be built under HUD, then we're not gonna consider it a manufactured home. We're gonna consider it a stick-built home.
Yeah, just like the other modulars that have come up at the golf course.
Yeah.
They're, they've come in, they, they meet our snow load standards.
Yes, they do.
And they have to have a garage when they're done. Um, those are local regulations that that has to meet. Now, the trailers down off of Hauser, they don't have to meet our snow loads. They don't have to be on permanent foundations. That's where the big difference is. And the trailers that are down on Hauser aren't allowed to go on to a lot on Cooper.
No.
Correct?
Well, there are, as you know, manufactured homes on Cooper, on permanent foundations.
Manufactured or modular?
Manufactured. Trailers, trailer homes. There are manufactured homes on Cooper on permanent foundations that, a lot of them have been detitled in the state because they, they took the wheels off.
Which you can, any, any manufactured home can do that. Take the wheels off, remove everything, fasten it down on a per- permanent foundation, you can detitle it.
Yeah.
And now it becomes an asset to the property.
Right. But I think that, I think that when those went on, they had to meet our local standards for snow load and things like that, because they're still standing and, and they're older. I think for what you're dealing with, eh, you're talking a modular, not a tiny, because it's gonna be on, it's gonna be regulated by, uh, International Building Code, right?
International Residential Code.
Yeah.
Unless it reaches, but like I said, the tiny home, you can get rid of that in the fact that, no matter what, it's just a very small home.
Right.
But the tiny home part of it allows it to have certain aspects that a normal.
Home does not.
A normal home does not.
The only question left to answer is, if you're expecting if I IRC and the state definition is three fifty, seven fifty, it would be safe to go with four hundred?
It would be very safe to go with four hundred.
Yeah.
Well, and I can make some phone calls tomorrow and get clarification on that with the state on, hey, if you guys are calling it this, does, does that now change the appendix in the IRC? Do we allow these specifications up to a seven hundred square foot? I can get clarification on that, um, pretty easily.
I think that's what we need to do here. I think that what I'm hearing is, and believe me, Brian, I'm certainly not expert in this, but it has to do with definition. If it's a tiny home, it's under certain, uh, rules and regulations. If it's a modular, it's under different rules, regulations. If it's manufactured, it's under yet another. So, we need to decide what is it? Is it gonna be tiny? Is it gonna be modular? Is it gonna be manufactured? And, and then I think we proceed from there.
Well, I think with our zoning now, it can't be manufactured, correct?
It can.
Manufactured has to be.
On a lot in town?
On a lot in town.
We allow manufactured home?
Yeah. On, on, on a permanent foundation with a thousand-foot minimum. So, we do allow them in town.
And, and I think for this discussion, if, it, it's not a question of, is it following rule set A, B, or C? It's a question of can a standard lot be used for any of those three if they're then built according to that? Because I think that the potential builders still don't know yet. They may build a tiny home, or they may build a very small home. And, and, and the primary question was, is there a square foot minimum? But again, hopefully, this is a conversation that's gonna come up a lot over the next few years. What is the, what is, what does our documentation say? So, he has guidance to, to guide people through the process.
And I think that's what's important about this, Dave, is that we're setting a, maybe setting a standard here or certainly a, a, a process here, uh, with what, what we do here. It sounds like to me, under the modular, they have more flexibility than they do under tiny or manufactured. That's what it sounds like to me.
I, I agree with that, Al, because manufactured, they have a thousand-foot minimum. Tiny home, they have a seven hundred square foot maximum, and they can't add on unless that tiny home was built with eight-foot walls instead of six-foot-eight walls. So, they would have a lot more leeway by going modular.
Modular.
And then there would be no minimum, they could add on to it. It would give them that flexibility.
That, that's what I'm hearing. Um, there may be something there that I, I'm not getting right now from two thousand miles away, but that's what I'm hearing is modular gives you a little more flexibility. First of all, we want this to happen. We're just trying to figure out how to make it happen and, and follow the rules. Uh, we're not trying to be a roadblock here, we're trying to be a help.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, I mean, we've gone round and round in previous meetings on manufacturing and modular and trying, and every time I think we've come to a resolution of what the meaning is and the definition, we, we still get wrapped around the axle and trying to figure it out. But I, I guess where I'm coming from is, is the interpretation, at least what I'm hearing, this is, this is not a manufactured home. It's more in line with modular and, and a tiny home. Has a different category based on the design standards associated with it. So, as I, as I read through it, as long as it's a primary struc-, the primary structure, it, if it's, if it's, whether it's, it doesn't really matter whether it's a tiny home or a modular home or a stick-built home, but it, there's, the only requirement within R3 is that the primary structure is built before an accessory structure is constructed.
Any of the, any of the R, R.
Yeah, they're all zoned that way, uh, every place. You can't have an accessory without a primary.
You can offer both at the same time, right?
Brian, the bottom, the bottom line here is, Brian, has this helped or confused the issue?
Say that again?
Has this discussion helped or has it confused the issue?
I, I think it's helped in the fact that whether it's modular, manufactured, or stick-built, it's allowed, and there's no square footage minimum. So, if it's a two hundred and fifty square foot stick-built, we can allow it. If it's a two hundred and fifty square foot modular, we can not allow it. If it's a manufactured, it's the only one that's gotta be a thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's right. Modular, modular has no square foot minimum, is that correct?
That's correct.
It doesn't have a minimum maximum, whereas manufactured has, um, limits as those tiny. So, I'm just, to me, modular is your answer.
What size is, is this lot? How many square feet?
It's five thousand and ninety square feet.
Okay.
It's got fifty foot of street frontage.
Yeah, I, I kinda figured the fifty foot, I just didn't know that it, I, it looks like it's over five thousand square feet.
Yeah, the, it's a, it's a conforming lot. I did check into that already and verified all that. It's a conforming lot.
Although, we're gonna be talking to Cody about the, what the state did on our zoning on minimum-sized lots. Correct, so, Cody?
I hadn't planned on it tonight, but yeah, we probably should talk about it at some point.
That's right, but right now, the code is five thousand square feet minimum on our lot.
So, questions answered?
I think we so. I just, do we have the flexibility to do tiny or modular is the question.
Yeah, so, we're not gonna regulate the size of it, we're not gonna, it just can't stay on wheels.
Okay.
And, and the only difference is you're looking ahead to say, are we gonna build it and be done? Or are we gonna build it and add on to it?
Right, and I realize that the modular would offer more flexibility, um, but in the meantime, we may not be able to get all the things into it that we want to get in if we are restricted by that. So, we, we may, and I, I don't know for sure what it will look like, but as long as we have the flexibility to look at both options.
But you feel comfortable now putting and offering on the lot?
I do.
And we recognize we still have to meet snow load requirements as well.
Yeah, yeah, and I've been in talk with, it's a guy out of Livingston that's building these, and I've offered to go to his facility and meet with him and talk to him about, okay, when they come in, how are they gonna be fastened down to the foundation to make sure that they aren't? We wanna take the recreational side of them out of it. And that, that's one of the aspects of tiny homes, is everybody sees them built on trailers and they can wheel in and wheel out. So, we're gonna take that aspect out of it. So, I'm gonna go to his facility, we're gonna talk about, okay, it can be a steel floor structure, but when it's done, it, the steel floor structure will become a permanent part of the foundation because IRC doesn't dictate whether it has to be wood or steel on the floor structure. So, as long as it's fastened down to the sill plate and the foundation correctly per IRC, then we should be good. And that's kind of the way I envisioned this going with the building department, kinda over, kinda overseeing how they come in to make sure that, you know, once we set that precedent, we kinda have a standard going forward that every lot that someone buys that wants to put one or two of them, that's fine, just, but here's how it's gonna go. So, we don't have to fight someone pulling in one on wheels and.
Yeah.
Putting cinder blocks under it and skirting it and calling it the house.
And if it's more than two, then it would be a conditional use because anything more than duplex, right? We had that conversation way back, too.
Well, in R2, you can have a principal structure and an ADU and a garage. Very.
But, but.
In R2.
Isn't, 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 that, that's permitted use, as it don't require conditional use. But if you have more, if you have multi-family.
It needs to go to R3.
R3 is duplexes, is allowed permitted, anything more than a duplex is conditional use.
Okay, that's just R3, okay.
Do we need to revisit at some point?
That, I, are we talking about the one that Cody gave us the ruling on?
Yeah.
Um, no, but, um, I, I sent that to Jeff and Al, I think, but the one that we've got that somebody is calling, it, it, it's basically you get one of, you get one primary, you get one ADU, and they change which one is, I don't remember the details, I don't have it in front of me, but Cody had given us the go-ahead to go with that, and I think I forwarded that on to Al and Jeff both. Remember seeing that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do we have here?
Go ahead, Al.
Modular terminology and not using tiny or manufactured, have we decided that?
No, I think what, that, what we've said is the, the option that they're considering is either a tiny home, which would meet whatever standards that is, or modular. Um, manufactured, I don't think is what's, is being part of this conversation.
But as soon as they put tiny, as soon as they use the word tiny in, in the application and permitting, they're restricted to square footage, but modular they're not.
Well, the tiny, the issue with the tiny home, as I understand the discussion, was, is the difference in, in how tall or how much headroom there is in, in a tiny home, which is smaller than the standard, which would be in a standard stick-built home.
And with.
And if they wanted to add on, if they did a tiny home, if they wanted to add on to that in the future, they would have to increase the height of the tiny home, so that's the limitation. So, it sounds like to me, the best option, if the plan is to add on to it, is to build to whatever that height standard is, that wouldn't be a tiny home in that case.
But the tiny home by definition, and this is what I'll have to get into, is in the IRC, you can't be more than four hundred square feet and qualify for any tiny home requirement. you can't be more than four hundred square feet and qualify for any tiny home requirement, um, part of that appendix. So if it's four hundred and one square feet, you're gonna build completely by the IRC. If it's three hundred and ninety-nine square feet or four hundred, then I can allow these tiny home projects to come in. That's where, and I'll clarify with the state on the three fifty to seven hundred and make sure that I'm, we're, we're doing that part right.
Just remember, what we do here is probably setting a precedent, so let's make sure we get it right.
I agree. We get it right the first time, it'll be way easier the second time.
That's right.
All right, is that?
Thanks, Brian, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, I, it's been answered for me, um, with the go.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down. Appreciate you guys' time.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Hey, Brian, before you leave, thank you, thank you for your work on the pool, I appreciate it.
Oh, you're very welcome. We're not done yet.
Yeah. You haven't heard the last of me yet.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next on the agenda, um, is a discussion with, uh, about Bear Tooth Front Community Forum, and this has to do with, uh, discussion the Bear Tooth Front Community Forum has had about sponsoring a forum this spring on the subject of growth policy, uh, both city and county, um, and the idea behind that was that that if you, if you were to ask the normal person walking on the street about what a growth policy is, they probably wouldn't be able to answer that question very well. So if we're, if we're going, since we're talking about the review of our growth policy for this year, um, I guess that as far as Bear Tooth Front Community Forum goes, it thought it would be a good subject for, for a forum, um, just to inform the public about what growth policies are, um, their importance, how they're used in, uh, land use planning and/or in providing support for various grants. And, uh, I initially sent the, the, I, report, the idea to Al and, and Cody and, uh, to see what, see what their response was, um, and then it ended up on the agenda for discussion, so. So I guess this is, this is the time for, I guess, getting your folks' thoughts about, um, with, this is something that the planning board and/or city wants to participate in along with Bear Tooth Front Community Forum. Um, if we were to do it, the dates that we're looking at are, is early May, either the first or second Saturday of May. And sort of the format that we've talked about just roughly was to, um, either be a panel discussion or a presentation, um. The fir-, first part of that would be basically to provide, provide an overview and background in terms of what, what, uh, growth policies are, um, probably some background on the, the state legislation or the Montana Annotated Code that relates to them, uh, maybe some examples from some other communities. And then after that, possibly would be more focusing now more and towards the, the local, you know, in terms of what the county has for growth policy, and then also, uh, focus on the Red Lodge, uh, growth policy more specifically. And sort of some subtopics under that would, would be like providing a history of the Red Lodge growth policy, how it came about, what, what its current status is, um, the purpose and objectives for the review of the growth policy, um, summary of issues and/or topics for review, um, the review process, um, and then, uh, a timeline for the review, and then also possibly to do, uh, follow that up possibly with, uh, breakout groups, tabletop discussions that's facilitated either, either amongst smaller groups or the audience as a whole, um, that would kind of delve into maybe some of the more specifics in terms of, of issues. But the idea of the, of the, this forum is more for information and, and, um, education in terms of, of growth policies. And then as Cody, you've alluded to, you know, part of the process is to ultimately have focused groups or breakout sessions, so that would, those things would probably, I guess, this forum would be, basically be sort of the kickoff for that or, or, or mechanism in which to sort of, uh, uh, move into that phase of, of the growth policy review. So that's just kind of the, a brief, I guess, overview of what we've talked about.
How long do you propose this to be on a Saturday? How many hours?
Yeah, well, typically, the forums have been about four to five hours.
Oh.
Um, between presentations and then follow-up group discussions. Teresa?
So I did get a chance to speak to Forrest Vanderbilt about the county's growth policy, and they're not even pursuing theirs until maybe next year. Um, and there was not an awful lot of confidence on Forrest's part that commissioners would wanna do anything more than update the census data. So, reading through our growth policy though, I don't think that changes the intent or the formula for this forum, because that's our big opportunity to work with the county on adjacent subdivisions or whether or not they're gonna pursue their growth policy. I think it's important that we start trying to figure out how we buffer an area together and, and kind of grow together, even, even if they're not gonna do their, their policy right now. The, the thought for Forrest was that they're gonna focus mostly on their subdivisions, and that was looking like a pretty monumental task, that it was gonna take them some time. So, you know, even if they're not gonna be working on the growth policy, I think we don't really change the message or the intent of the forum around working with the county.
Okay.
I think it would be good to, uh, have the county give us the information and education on the existing growth policy, which I personally don't have a clue about. And so, exactly, so I, I like the idea of that education, what is a growth policy? How is it used? Here is where we are, we're, we're reviewing and probably changing ours. The county, it's always been, is it every five years for the county as well?
I think so, but I'm not sure.
But I think they were, he said they were a couple of years behind us, so theirs wouldn't be due till 2026. They probably wouldn't start till next year.
No, but at least we would, we could, the public, it would get the public going on the growth policy, because they don't really see the line between the city and, and the county. I think it's a great idea for education, and we are required, of course, to get public input. So informing and educating them to start with is a really good start. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Cody, do you have any thoughts?
No, I love this idea, and I think it actually times out really well with where you're going in your growth policy update. Um, growth policies are such an elusive document for so many communities, 'cause there's just a really gross misunderstanding of how they're utilized and how you legally can utilize them, and really their purpose. So what an incredible opportunity to provide that education to your community. I just think this is great.
Okay. Al?
Yeah, I think you, you covered it. I think it's important on how we facilitate it and organize it, uh, to make sure that, uh, it moves along. I think you talked about the history, and I think one of the things we need to emphasize is how the growth policy influences or impacts our zoning decisions. I think there's a relationship there that people may or may not understand. Um, I love the idea of a breakout with maybe a planning board member or Cody sitting at each table to facilitate the discussion and listen. Um, I, I like those ideas. Um, and I think, um, my suggestion was that we form a little subcommittee of this group to work with the forum in terms of organizing and planning this thing and facilitating it.
Okay. Yeah, anybody else have any? Ollie or Sue?
I think it's a great idea, I think people have no clue. We, and we bring it up all the time, but I don't think people really know.
I think they've heard of it.
Purpose of it or.
They've heard it.
Yeah.
Well, I've even heard in years past, some members of the planning board asking the question, what's a growth policy and why are we, why are we going through this review?
That's ridiculous, we just did that, you know, like ten years ago.
Dave?
So I, I had a little question, I think it's been answered. So this is basically something that's being put together and done by the Bear Tooth Community Forum. So basically, it, it's like some of the advisory committees we have within the city, they're just gonna gather some information and offer it as input to the planning board, and you guys can choose to follow that or choose not to follow that. But then the idea is that you're gonna try to give them some guidance about what information you would find useful. Is that a good summary of it?
Yeah, that's maybe a little, a little more background, yeah. Bear Tooth Front doesn't really advocate for any particular issue per se, but, but is a, a, basically a forum to exchange ideas and, and, and/or educate or inform the public about various issues or topics in front of the community or coming forward in the community. So in, in this, in some cases, groups have come to the Bear Tooth Front Community Forum asking the forum to help them facilitate a meeting, the active transportation committee and plan was part of that. They came to the Bear Tooth Front, I think, to, originally to bring in a speaker and, and to introduce the community to the idea of what active transportation was. And then an offshoot of that was the formation of the ATP Committee, and then that went forward in terms of ultimately developing the active transportation plan. Um, so that, that's, I guess, maybe the, one of the most recent examples of, of a group that.
I, I guess my concern is just how, is, is, is a check on it to just make sure we don't have, and I think, it is not against the, the Bear Tooth Front Community Forum at all, but like some random group sprouts up and says, hey, what's your input for? If, if the idea is that input is for some city entity, whatever the city entity is, I would hope that there's an involvement there, not just, hi, random neighbors and friends of mine, come and let's have a conversation, and we'll tell the city what to do. That's, that's my concern, is we don't want there to be a lack of guidance.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not the way the forum, that's not the way the forum functions. Um, it, the idea here would basically be, be working in partnership with the planning board, and so we're just helping facilitate the public participation part of that. But, but all, we would not be, as a group, we would not be making recommendations to the planning board. It would, whatever came out of that meeting would be, it would be, would be part of the public.
The public input.
The primary purpose of this forum would be to educate the community about why they should care, what it is, what a growth policy is, and why they should care about it. And then while we're at it, what do they think about the growth? You know, that's just capturing, you know, taking advantage of the crowd that's there and participating. But, uh, it's not for the purpose of making a recommendation to the planning board or to the city.
Al?
One of my discussions with Jeff and with Dave is that, to me, to me, it's a partnership between the planning board and the forum, so the planning board would be fully involved. Um, and the second part of it is, is part of this thing, when my idea with the subcommittee is, as we go through this stuff with Cody and whatever, we'll identify areas in the growth policy that we think need attention, and those things would be mentioned to this public forum and get opinions on those things. I don't see this as a wild, wild west, open shoot from the hip on anything. I see it, see us trying to identify areas in the growth policy that we know need some attention and that input in these various breakout groups on, on those issues. I don't see it being the wild, wild west.
Okay.
That's why I wanted to put this subcommittee together to work with the forum as we go, as the planning board goes through the review of the growth policy along with Cody, to identify areas in the growth policy that we know need attention.
Okay. Did I answer your question, Dave?
I, 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 I think so, that was, that was my understanding, I just wanted to clarify. It's like I said, that, the, the planning board, uh, is, is taking advantage of the forum as a mechanism to help get words out there and, and, and then do it. But it, I guess that it's, there, there, there is communication going on, and it's, it's part of the process.
Yeah. So, I guess the next, uh, is there, do we, do we need a resolution? Or do you want to talk about the committee, Al?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody is interested in being in that subcommittee, I, I, I certainly would be interested if there's anybody else who'd wanna be in there. Of course, you are part of the planning, of the front, so you, you'd be wearing two hats. Um, but maybe you and I and one other from the planning board be part of the planning group for this forum would be good.
Okay. Anybody else wanna?
I'm maxed.
What?
I'm maxed out with meetings.
I didn't hear that, Susan?
I'm ready by default.
Yeah.
Jeff already on the SCS, and then you're joining.
Well.
Wow, okay.
But you probably want other input.
Yeah, definitely want other input. That, yeah, I, I don't feel comfortable necessarily wearing two hats in this.
Unweighted, yeah.
It would be really nice if Marie could be part of it because of the county connection. Since she's not here, I think, I think we should be volunteering. What do you think, Al?
I'm sorry, I'm not here, I didn't hear any of that. Tell me that, Jeff, what was that?
The, the suggestion was to volunteer Marie to represent the county.
And the planning board.
Okay. So it's Ian, Marie, and who else?
You.
And who else?
And that.
You and Marie.
Well, I, I guess by default, I'm, I'm already there, so.
Okay.
I just don't want, I just, I, I just don't want, being, being on the planning board, I, I don't want to unduly influence the planning board. I think we need a little bit more independent input, so.
I think that every member of the planning board would have to be present at this, at this breakout session. I think that would be ideal. Don't you think?
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna do this in a vacuum, but I mean, I just wanna make sure that we come together with a structure and, and then, I'm thinking out loud now, but if we have breakout tables, I'd like to have a member of the planning board and/or, and Cody or whomever, since, since it's May, I'm not sure who it'll be, 'cause Cody's through April, but, um, at each table to facilitate those discussions, I think that would be a good idea.
I like that.
Yeah, I think between now and then, all we really need is, is participation in the, with the planning board in terms of what the format's gonna be and, and what, what topics to cover. So for that, only need one or two members of the planning board to participate with Bear Tooth Front in that planning phase.
We know who, who might facilitate it, will be somebody from the forum would be the facilitator of this whole thing? Or would we bring somebody in from the outside?
Well, that's, that's something that could be discussed, yeah, I mean, a part of the planning. We have, we have talked about asking Dan Clark to
Beepo.
be part of, be part of that, but, uh, so that, that's one ask, I guess, one idea that's been thrown out and discussed.
That's kinda where I was leading to, so, something like that, yeah.
But, but I guess that final structure and who, who to invite is, is something that should be jointly discussed with the, with, between the planning board and Bear Tooth Front.
So as we move forward here, I will have to do the initial meetings with Marie and whomever, um, by Zoom. I'll be home by April fifth or fourth.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Cody, you have any more thoughts about that, about this?
Nope.
Do you wanna be part of the discussion in terms of the planning phase?
I can provide some input upfront here and some info for you, but I don't, is this the right time, Mayor, to like have this discussion?
About your timing?
Yeah.
I have an announcement I'd like to make. This is not Cody's last meeting. However, middle of April will be. So, but we've got to, we've got to reprieve here and stay for another six weeks, so we have Cody a little bit longer.
We're gonna work her to death for these next six weeks. Bet on that.
I'll be worked to death, trust me. Yeah, so, I have taken a job outside of Great West, for those of you that don't know. I'm the new planning director for Madison County, which will keep me home a little bit more with my son, so this is good news. But I start that job on Monday, but Great West has asked me to stay on to continue with Red Lodge through our planning contract mid-April. And then, the contract and grant for the downtown planning growth policy will transition to my counterpart, Jerry Garbets. You guys will love Jerry. He's amazing, so.
And there are some constraints in that working relationship. We have to respect basically her new employer, so our communications will be via email and after hours, and we won't expect real-time pickup, and that's fine. So, we just have to, we basically have to respect both her kind constraints with her family as well as put ourselves, if we were her employer, you know, what level would we want or not want her being interrupted, and we'll respect those boundaries. And in return, we get Cody for six more weeks.
I don't know if that's good or bad, you guys. I'm sorry.
Hey, Cody? Cody, I'm not making that promise.
Yes. I figured out. That's okay.
All right, next. Anything else on that? Next on the agenda is Cody. You're up in terms of review of the survey results for the downtown revitalization plan?
Yeah, does everyone have their packet with them, or do you need me to share my screen?
Probably need to share your screen.
Probably better if you can share, yeah. By the way, Jeff, are you gonna tell Marie or am I? I will. I'll take care of that.
Okay.
That's what happens if you don't show up to meetings.
That is the unspoken rule, I believe.
No comment.
Yeah. All right, guys. Well, just a quick summary of the community survey results for the downtown plan survey. Just a quick recap. Let's see if we can get this moving. Okay. So, just as a reminder, the survey ran live, so to speak, November 1st through the end of December, so two months. We received 302 total responses, which is a 13% response rate. And I know that sometimes people scoff at that, but actually, the average in Montana is 8%. So, we'll take what we can get here. And we advertised via the Carbon County News, both print and online, the city website, community posters, the Open House Forum in December, community Halloween trick-or-treat event, and the Christmas stroll. So, let's just quickly go through each question. Question one, where's your primary residence? You can see the majority of respondents lived right within Red Lodge city limits. Question two, if you live in Red Lodge, how long have you been a resident? The majority, again, of your respondents have lived in Red Lodge for more than 10 years. Question three, what is your age? This is pretty standard for these surveys. The majority of respondents are over age 65. With your, you just followed the step ladder down, so right on par with what we generally see in these. Question four, are you a member of the Red Lodge business community, and if so, how? And as you can see, the majority were not. And then, we did break out business owner, business manager, all those things. So, after not a member, came business owners after that. Um, question five, what is your occupation? Majority retired, and then a pretty even spread across the board. Within other, I will pull those comments for you guys. There were too many to plug in here, but we had everything under the sun, but a lot of self-employed entrepreneurs, online e-commerce, things like that that stood out to me. Question six, do you volunteer within the community? A resounding yes, which is encouraging. Question seven, what do you like most about downtown Red Lodge? Pretty even split here, and good representation across all choices, but walkability and historic character were the frontrunners. Question eight, what would you improve about downtown Red Lodge? Again, a little bit of a frontrunner here with pedestrian conditions, meaning sidewalks, curbs, business entrances, highway crossings, bike parking, lighting, and then, public restrooms after that, followed by parking. Question nine, in your opinion, what are the top three challenges facing downtown Red Lodge? Number one, again, pedestrian conditions, followed by parking, and then, a pretty close tie between job and business opportunities and public restrooms. Question 10, what is your mode of transportation within the city? Pretty even split between walking and driving. And 11, if you drive downtown, what would encourage you to walk or bike instead? More connection to trails, of trails to downtown, and sidewalk improvements were the two frontrunners there. We can go back through if we wanna talk about any of those questions, but I do just wanna get out kind of next steps on the downtown plan. So, I'm busy working away, drafting a draft plan for you, plugging in some of this information as kind of a baseline or a place to start, so to speak. And the goal is that my counterpart, Jerry, will actually present that to you probably end of April, early May. And then, at the same time, when that's presented to you, he'll also work with you to organize some focus groups. And these don't have to be huge. This doesn't have to be a huge deal, but we just wanna get people involved where they want to be, if they want to be, in trying to craft this plan and get it more specific and narrow down on what you're really looking for as a community, downtown community. And then, third, host those focus group meetings. And Great West can facilitate those to any extent you prefer and meet online, in person, to get the draft plan refined. And that would be targeting May and June. I'm gonna stop sharing that so we can see each other. Any surprises in any of that?
Honestly, not a one. I could've written it, yeah.
Good. Perfect. I know there's been questions. There always are questions around surveys and the reliability, and I'm right there with you. I mean, it is what it is. But it is a decent mechanism for at least gaining some feedback. And all the, you know, the questions up front, the demographic questions, I know those seem a little bit pointless, but it does really help define, as we draft the document, who's looking for what. I mean, if we see that the majority of your respondents are over age 65, and, you know, parking is an issue, and pedestrian issues, accessibility, things of that nature, then we see that there's maybe an underlying tone of more senior-friendly services or things of that nature, as people are moving into a little bit more challenges with mobility and things of that nature. So, that's the reason we pull the demographic questions in.
Yeah, I guess for me, it was just, you know, another confirmation about just keeping the community walkable and the connectivity. That coming out is kind of a high priority. The other encouraging last step was, again, to see support for maintaining the historic character of the downtown.
Yeah.
But those, you know, that's been an overriding theme for, ever since the first master plan, really.
Yeah.
And so, that's a consistent, been a consistent desire that's been expressed by the community. It's good, nice to see that reinforced through, at least with this survey, and at least with the people that responded.
Agreed.
Teresa?
Say, Cody, was there anything in the way of comments that seemed to present a trend that didn't show up in the data?
Yeah, and I'll actually pull those and share those with you guys. I sometime, I don't like to put those on blast, 'cause, you know, keyboard warriors, right? A lot of times, people, it's great to have raw feedback, but sometimes it's personal and ridiculous, in my opinion. So, yeah, I can, I'll share those with the mayor, and then we'll, yeah, we'll go from there. But, yeah, I mean, the majority of the trends were more, I mean, of course, it's nothing that will surprise you guys, but affordability, right? There's nowhere to live. There's nowhere, I can't afford to work here and live here. Sidewalks, oh, the city has all this money. Why aren't they repairing sidewalks? Why is there nowhere to, there's a lack of children's programming or kid-friendly events? So, and some of that stuff's on base and some off, so, kinda standard.
Yeah.
Could you go through your timeline again that you had? You said you'd have a draft by the end of April, first of May, and then, after that, would be a follow-up with focus groups? Is that kind of the way I understood it?
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, and really, so in my mind, and granted, you'll work with Jerry on this, and there's fluidity to it, but in my mind, by end of summer, you should have a really solid draft that you can take through public hearing and adoption in the fall, and it can kinda run simultaneous timeline-wise with your growth policy. But, yeah, you're, I mean, I know this sounds bizarre, but you're really through the hardest part, which is just getting people to talk and listen and engage. So, this is, this is a good place to be. Now, we'll give you a draft that you can work off of, which I feel is easier than starting from scratch. And again, with that, we'll pull in the old one, the 1986 one, and the update on the action plan from there that was more recent. So, we'll pull all those pieces together and get you a draft that you can start with.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, John?
Yes, John Clayton, Winter Creek, South Vegas. I was actually a little bit surprised by some of these results. The huge emphasis on walkability is something I really agree with, but I was pleasantly surprised to see how many other people love the walkability of downtown. And I also had an insight in looking at these results, because what do we mean by walkability? Is it just that you can drive to a place and then walk to all the stores? That would describe Rumrock Mall. To me, what the magic of downtown Red Lodge is, is that it's the hub of a walkable community. And so, somewhat counterintuitively, we end up with a downtown plan that will actually have lots of priorities outside of just Broadway. That to be walkable, we need to focus on the connections from downtown to the rest of the walkable community. That's what makes Red Lodge a success. That's what makes the property values so high, so close to downtown. That's what drives, you know, a lot of the lodging businesses that are wanting to locate close to downtown. And so, I hope that you guys will prioritize things like trail connections up and down the bench, things like sidewalks. You know, there are some missing sidewalks close to downtown on city-owned parcels. Does that mean that to support our downtown, the city needs to spend money building those sidewalks? And so, yeah, so, I thought it was really cool that it was walkability, and I also thought it gave us some interesting sort of potential insights going forward on how to prioritize for a walkable downtown.
Okay. Anybody else have any more comments, or Al, do you have any thoughts, comments?
No, to me, there weren't any surprises in the comments made. I certainly agree with it. It sounds like we may have a draft before the forum. Is that correct?
Probably right alongside that, yeah. Pretty close to it.
Tell me the date of the focus group again?
Of the forum?
You're gonna do focus groups after the draft? What was...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You won't get into your focus groups until probably June, end of May, early June.
Yeah, I, that, there is, you know, that may be something to talk about, is if there's a draft available, maybe that's sort of a subtopic as part of the forum, at least maybe presenting some aspects of the draft at that.
Aspects of it, yeah.
Kind of a prelude to the focus groups, future focus groups.
And that will be the same thing with the growth policy. You'll also have a draft of that probably right at the beginning of May. So, you will have a draft to get going for the forum on that, too.
Okay.
What you think we need to look at?
It'll just be a starting point for you. And again, the growth policy will look real similar, 'cause you just did it in 2020. We just have some pieces that we need to add and, to clarify, I should say.
So, Jeff, if we were talking about the fourth or eleventh, it looks more and more like we should hold for the 11th and press for a first, you know, a good draft of each on the planning board meeting, eighth. Throw it out there.
This action plan that you said came along after the downtown revitalization plan, is that online? Or is that something that you can, that you can digitize and send over to us?
It is online. Yeah, it's a separate document, but it's in the same location as your 1986 revitalization plan. That's where I found it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I'll get these survey results. I'll work with Danae and Lonnie to get these online as well.
All right. I guess we'll move on. Maybe the next item on the agenda is March election of officers, but maybe before we go there, I'd just ask, John, you're the only one here, and if you have any other comments you'd like to share with the planning boards, unless you wanna sit through the rest of the planning board meeting?
No, those comments on walkability were what I came.
Okay.
Thank you for that opportunity.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
So, the election of officers in March, I believe our bylaws call for nominations and election of officers, the first planning board meeting in March. Al, do you wanna address this as being part of the...
Yeah, I guess I would just try to jump ahead of it a little bit and see what the calculus was, and the officers would go into their positions in March, but the bylaws are pretty clear that we do it the first meeting in March. So, I guess to confirm with the bylaws, we oughta move this agenda item to the first meeting in March.
Okay.
We have three board members whose terms end in March, Polly, myself, and Sue. And I think Dave is gonna put out a notice here sometime in the next week for people who are interested in the planning board. But they would not take their positions until the end of March or the first meeting in April, 'cause our terms end on the end of March. Is that correct by the bylaws?
I believe that was it, March 31st.
So, I can go back and double-check it. Let me add one comment on the first thing. So, that ad will be in tomorrow's paper. I'd like to request that the board members who are interested send or resend, as the case may be, the letters in in response to that. send or resend, as the case may be, the letters in, in response to that after it's officially posted. So Susan, I've, I've gotten your email that's there, but what I'll do is I've, so the planning board, um, is gonna, is, is treated a little bit differently than the other boards. So the other boards don't make quasi-judicial decisions. They don't, they just, they just offer inputs. And so those boards, and particularly if they're mayoral appointments, um, history and tradition and the feedback from council has been, we don't necessarily have to post those positions if we're just reappointing somebody to that. Because of kind of the elevated role that planning board pays, you guys actually do make quasi-judicial decisions. Um, and, and as I talked with Al and, and, and we discussed, and again, with feedback from council, um, what we're gonna do is have everybody reapply for those positions. Um, obviously, um, your background, your history, and I've had the opportunity to work all of you certainly helps, but I just want to dot all the i's and cross all the t's. So, once it's officially open, we had somebody who applied for the resort tax board. In fact, two people applied for the resort tax board, two or three weeks before the posting went up. And so, once the posting was up, will you please resend your email to us, just so we can say, yes, we received it within those timeframes? So, so that's the first part. Um, the second part about the bylaws, I did see that it's in March. Um, I didn't understand the timeline correlation between that, and I know your positions expired at the end of March, but I didn't see that your, I thought it was weird that the bylaws are you're picking your people before you, the, the knowns of what's there. Um, yeah, and it didn't make sense, but, but I didn't see that it was necessarily officers to take place in the first of April. I, I think, we can go back and revisit that, and I guess to Jeff's point, prior to the, to the March meeting, um, but look at that. But I almost saw that as that took effect right then, but we certainly ought to re-look at that and, and revisit it.
Yeah, in terms of when the officers take.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I saw that part. What I did see was the nomination and election of officers at the first meeting in March.
Yeah, and, 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 yeah, but it didn't really say when they take effect. I would presume it would be then and there, or at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Where it was, where it's been in the past is they take their position at the next meeting following the election.
So, the middle of March.
So, if, if we elect officers, the first meeting in March on the thirteenth, they would take their position in the second meeting, March, which is the twenty-seventh or something like that.
And, and in some really abstract scenario, if somebody was elected to an office at the first of March, took over on the second meeting of March, and their term expired at the end of March, and they didn't get reappointed or didn't, so we nominated Polly, and Polly was in charge, she'd be in charge for one minute meeting, and then we'd have a vacancy the first of April. So, that was the part that I thought was kind of odd and strange, but that's how I read it.
Maybe our bylaws need to be changed to the election of officers, the first meeting in April, because all of our terms, uh, end up the end of March, so the first meeting in April would make more sense.
We just updated the bylaws.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just in, in with Jeff on, on what the observations were. Um, I would think we would want Cody and, and probably the city attorney's input. I think it would make sense. Um, but, but I, I'm not gonna make that call.
Well, it's already been, yeah, that's true, we can amend that.
But wasn't that, was that your resolution, or was that the council resolution? So, so what I'm hearing, I think, is the possibility that you guys may amend the resolution at the next meeting to change it to the first of April, rather than the first of March?
Well, I think that it only makes sense. Unless Polly wants to put it on her resume.
Hey, I, my intent here was not to open up a can of worms. I mean,
I appreciate the can of worms being opened up at the meeting prior to when it really would have been an issue.
What does it take to change, uh, March to April in our bylaws? We can do that. That doesn't need council approval, right?
It does.
It does. Yeah, you'd have to draft it and you could review it and make a motion to push it forward to council at your next meeting, and then it would go to council for their approval.
The, the, the problem is that the soonest we would get that to council would be thirteen days after your next meeting, which is, which is into, um, my guess is, my guess is that you would per, uh, I'd get Dennison's input on it, but, but, um, we, we have done some things at council, knowing what the intent is. We've acknowledged the intent, even though it hasn't been formalized. So, I would think you might be able to do that here, but.
Is that something here that we could make a motion and second and vote to table this? Table the election of officers until the first meeting in April?
Oh, because, be, well, because it's an agenda item at this meeting, but, but, but the reality is, your motion is to ignore the bylaws, is really what your motion is, if I put it in different words.
Okay.
That was not intent, but to find out what, what the, what the, the intent was to find out, does this planning board want to make a change or not? Number one. Number two, if they wanted to make a change, what was it? And number three, when would it go into effect? I think the fact that, that the fact that we have a conflict now between March thirty-first and, and the election date, to just change our current uh, bylaws for the election to be in April, for the first meeting in April, I think that solves a problem.
And, and if we're making some assumptions on what those appointments are, with the, with the, the sitting officers, then we don't have an issue, really. We could, we could still go through with uh, the appointments and then change the bylaws in April, so that the next year.
We don't have that same issue over and over again.
Exactly.
We obviously need to change the bylaws. I think that's, that's an obvious thing. And I, I guess we just need to ask, you know, you, Polly, and Susan, if you're going to, well, I, we really can't, because the appointments are going to be city council appointments?
There, there is a city council appointment, and there's two mayoral appointments.
In this, in the group of three?
In the group of three.
Okay.
Did I understand the question properly, and did I answer it to your satisfaction?
I mean, we could just find that out, and then we could go ahead and elect the officers and.
Yeah, and then, and then with, with some assumptions that.
Why do you keep looking at me and saying assumptions? I don't make assumptions.
Assumptions that
Oh, well, let, 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 let me.
People that are here today will be there next month. And still want those same appoint, the, the same appointments of the same offices. We don't know.
Well, we know three of us, well.
I, 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 I think, I think what I'm hearing hinted is, can we get some insight from the mayor if he's inclined to reappoint the two returning mayors? In which case, I would say, I certainly have no in, intentions otherwise, but the background checks aren't in yet, so.
I'm just saying that the only way around this is based on those assumptions, but we just have to let it play out and see what happens. Since we, we can't change the bylaws ahead of what is due for the bylaws.
We can't, we can't make them effective quick enough. It's a real issue.
Yeah, I'm surprised we didn't catch that when we were looking at the bylaws.
Has, has it historically been March, or is that a goof that got happened this time?
It seems like it's always been, been March.
Always been March since I've been on there. It's always been that first meeting in March. And the officers took place, took office the second meeting in March. That's the way it's been, I've been on the me, on the board.
And I always assumed it was the same, that meeting coincided with the appointment of new members, if there were new members.
That kind of strikes me, too.
So, at the April thirtieth date, it's kind of really true me this time.
Actually, you know what? To your point, no, we're, we're appointing them at the, we will be appointing them at the second meeting. So, the appointments will have happened by the time that meeting is there.
But after the second, oh.
No, because, because city council occurs the day before planning board meeting. And so, the next city council meeting is when?
March twelfth.
March twelfth is when it'll be up, and your next meeting is March thirteenth.
Correct.
So, by the time you get to March thirteenth, you won't have to make any assumption about who's gonna be there or not.
They don't take office until April.
Yeah, you'll know who they are, even though.
Know who they are, and if they're, they're not here because they're not in effect yet, we can go ahead and volunteer them.
So, you're only gonna, you're gonna, you're just posting this, like? Do a one-week posting?
It, it's a little bit longer than that. It's, it's like nine or ten days, but it was, it was actually supposed to go out last time, and it slipped through the cracks administratively, but we're still fine. We are, we are planning on filling it the next time, so if you know people that are interested, please make sure that they know that it's out there. Um, but, but, to, going back to the point, by the time you get to planning board meeting, you will know who will be on in April. Whether or not they are there or not yet, you'll still know.
Yeah.
And should the officer, should the officers be elected by the, the new members, assuming there are, or the current members now?
Well, as I read your current, it's the members that are, if you're making that decision at the first meeting in March. Now, whether they should be or not is a discussion that you guys can have and correct for the future. But right now, I think my understanding is it would be the existing members who make the decision about who will be running things after the new members are in place.
And again, that's been the precedent. Um, so what I'm hearing is we should elect officers on March thirteenth.
Yeah.
Affirmative.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, let's table this till March thirteenth.
All right, and then at, at some point, we probably need to revisit our bylaws and make them consistent. Cody, do you have any thoughts or comments on this discussion?
No, I think you're on the right track. Um, you guys just, Mayor, Jeff, Al, just let me know if you'd like me to look at those bylaws and look, give it, give it a once-over and you two draft.
Just looking at the bylaws that I have in front of me, all I have to do is, on the election of officers, change it from March to April.
Yeah, I mean, it's really quick, it's.
Yeah. All right, um.
You guys could put that on the next agenda meeting.
Yep.
All, all right, um, the next is, uh, are we done with this?
I hope so.
Um, next on is, uh, discussion of planning board priority rankings. Al, do you want to take the lead on this one?
I'm just gonna kind of piggyback what Sandy started with under her comments, and, um, the first thing, I just, uh, every member of the planning board, uh, was given an opportunity to list things that they thought were important to them, um, either on their own opinion or from input from the community, and that included Courtney, and we came up with seventeen items. If a planning board member wants something on there, put on there, there was no discussion or reasoning or whatever. It was in honor and respect of a planning board member, and we came up with seventeen possible, um, topics that, uh, was at some level of interest to at least one member of the planning board. So then what we did is we sent out a survey to each member to have them rank them, uh, which you all have hopefully in front of you. And we came up with, uh, a fairly clear ranking of what we thought were the top five or six. Um, and then, uh, I shared this, uh, with the mayor and, and with Sandy, because the idea was that this would give uh, land use committee, the council, and the mayor, um, some idea of what the planning board members were thinking. And we wanted some input from those other, um, entities to, to see if we were on track, if there were some things that we should add, and, um, because ultimately, we get our direction from the council. Um, I was pleased to see that there was some pretty consistent, um, level of ranking for the, for the top four on your list there, which was downtown revitalization, review, update growth policy, accessory dwelling unit structure definition, and review state regulations. Um, those four were pretty, actually, we went in, yeah, to four. Then there became some discrepancy, and, uh, the, um, the council came up with a higher ranking for workforce housing than we did. And the council came up with a higher ranking for minimum lot size than we did. And, uh, those were the two inconsistencies, uh, with us in the council. Um, our workforce ranking was number twelve, and they, and the council ranked workforce housing across the board at A or B, so that's pretty high. And, uh, minimum lot size, our ranking for that was, uh, I think thirteen. And the council felt like that that should be a much higher ranking. Those are the two big um, discrepancies, uh, other than the top four or five. The other thing is, it's Sandy's discussion, is she wanted to add, or the council wanted to add um, annexation and de-annexation, um, and she wanted to talk about, uh, minimum lot size, and also, um, building on city uh, land regroup and process. And so my question is there, on those new ones, should we do a reranking, or should we agree that those, those two should move up into the top five or six? Um, I think we have plenty of work to do just dealing with the top five here. Um, on the clarification of airport master plan, I think that was a general, um, statement, uh, from, from the planning board, but include a lot of things, and I know we have some discrepancies that, um, Jody and the mayor pointed out, on the northern, uh, RPZ, uh, runway protected zone is, is not accurate with what's on the, uh, that overlay is not accurate with what's on the current, um, airport plan, so I think it's just a question of drafting. I think everything is, if you just move it a little farther north, I think we'll be okay. So my question, I guess, is, is do we want to redo this ranking to include those new ones that Sandy, um, and the council added? Or should we just kind of plug them in, um, as we've done before, as additional priorities?
Sue, go ahead.
Well, I noticed, looking at the two different things, that, um, the ranking order that I put online is not what wound up on the consolidated copy.
Oh.
It's very different. So, I'm wondering if, if, maybe we should do what you suggested and rearrange to where we consolidate everything, but as part of that process, um, allow everybody to correct whatever was in the wrong place, or in the unintended place, or whatever.
Now that you mention it, mine's not the same either.
I sent this out, I didn't get any feedback, Susan. I may have made a mistake in putting stuff in here, but if I did, I'm sorry. Um, I thought I copied directly, but anybody.
Oh, so what you're saying is the one that Al put together is okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
But the one that, there's a difference.
This one is different.
The one that, uh, Sandy handed out is different.
I wonder if when you did a sort, if it didn't include all the fields or something, and it swapped it around.
She may have used an older one, um.
The one we had was so hard to read. As you can tell, I made it so I could read it better. This, this is even enlarged from that. And I don't.
I, I guess I, I have a second, uh, 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 wait, hold on, hold on, sorry.
Go ahead, Dee.
I, I have, uh, a second question, Al, and, and I know from some of our conversations, um, you had expressed a concern. you had expressed a concern that council was doing some rankings prior to the planning board finishing their rankings or still having some discussions. And, and that point confused me a little bit because my understanding of the objective here was to get the feedback from council, the, the board that ultimately approves stuff, to offer their input into this is what our priorities are, and, and more, more drastically or more importantly, identify things that they didn't have an interest in, so the council doesn't get caught in the same situation where they were last year, where they put in a whole bunch of work and effort into something that the council doesn't have any interest in moving forward with.
My concern was, and I made this clear to Sandy, is the documents that we were showing to the land use committee and the council had not been approved by the planning board, that it was a working document.
Okay, I understand that.
What's happened is, to the good, is now we have not finalized our ranking, we are discussing it tonight, and we have some input now from the council, and I assume the land use committee is part of this, that suggests that workforce housing should be ranked higher than what we did, and suggests that minimum lot size should be ranked higher than what we did, and the council is asking us to place annexation and de-annexation, uh, and building owned land, building on city-owned land, um, within our ranking, of which we had not included, and my question is, we have agreement on the top five, maybe top six, and do we then say, in addition to those six, we ought to also put in the A bracket these other two? Now, the reason that workforce housing, I think, was ranked fairly low by the planning board members is what is our impact on workforce housing as a planning board zoning commission? You know, um, to, to me, that's a council, um, thing that has more impact on it, not that the planning board doesn't have some, but our impact on affordable housing is pretty small compared to what the council has, um, and the city has.
Based, based on the conversation earlier tonight, I don't know that I agree with the conclusion, because that whole conversation I heard was, are, are zoning ordinance is shutting it down, or are they allowing it?
Well, that's another discussion we'd have, and we'll go late into the night on that, but I mean, um, like I said, it, it, this is a working document, and we work for the council, if the council wants workforce housing up near the top, then that's where it goes, um, we're just telling you what the planning board members felt that it was low priority, if the council says it's higher priority, we work for the council.
Yeah, I guess relative to that particular issue, uh, to me, it's, uh, it's gets to what's currently in our zoning, and I guess when I looked at that, you know, we've liberalized our zoning to be more permissive or allowable of, of, to, for more affordable housing units, whether it's with multi-family or allowing ADUs or those, you know, or those, now this, the discussion earlier this evening gets more back to definitions and, and where some of those things kinda come up, so it, maybe it does need more conversation, but but that's the rationale, I was, for me, making a lower priority is that what else can we do in zoning?
You already done it.
Yeah, yeah, Theresa?
Yeah, so I have a difference of opinion that clashes with the marching orders that we're supposed to be taking from council. This board responds to the community and the applications and the concerns that are brought in here, and discussions that we have that council is not part of and does not understand as closely related to our zoning documents and what we've already discussed or what we have said or prioritized as needing to be addressed. I think there are some good points on here, um, you know, we did get a, a pointer, um, that there are new state regulations from Cody and, um, uh, we know that we need to address those within our document, but, um, I mean, there are some things in here that are not understood as, as widely by city council, which would account for a whole different prioritization. Um, it's good that we have a two-way street, that's excellent, and I'm glad that we can see now what's on council's mind and maybe, you know, mesh that into what we're doing, but a lot of it is maybe not understood, or they haven't been part of the discussion. And Sandy, I know you're doing a good job of, you know, but we're in the beginning of it all, right, it's a whole new council, and they're getting a lot of information from you, um, but it doesn't explain the, the wealth of information and discussion that goes on here.
Um, Al, just as a, a point, that minimum lot size is also, that's part of the new state regulations, and so that's why we prioritized that as a separate entity, when frankly, it, it's part of the state regulation. So it seems, I think what, where they were going were, there were certain priorities for the city council, which of course is to bring our zoning in compliance with state, the new state regulations. First and foremost, before we do anything, let's, let's find out where we are, and we are putting an emphasis on workforce housing, and there should be a discussion at the planning board level as to where that might go, what kind of regulations we might pass. Are we okay right now with designating a certain area for a very large multiplex or multi-dwelling type of thing? So I think it was more, um, what can the zoning do to facilitate workforce housing as the main goal of the city council going forward? Then after that, it's obvious that, that we need to do the, the revitalization plan for downtown, we have to review the growth policy because, you know, we're on deadlines with, uh, with, um, Great West, and we have a grant to accomplish those, so obviously, those were top priority, that's why they went up so high. The ADUs, as we saw tonight, um, defining an ADU, we ran into last time, which I've explained a lot of this to both the land use committee and to the city council, they're not quite as un-understanding as you might be, I think what we want to avoid is what happened last year, which is this board spending a lot of time and energy on something that would fail at city council. And it was my understanding that this, from now on, or maybe just this administration, whatever, takes the, the, the planning board takes a direction from city council that says, this is what we would like you to work on. If there are some topics in here that you specifically feel strongly about moving up the ladder, that's what we need to know, and obviously, we have, uh, two, two more suggestions, 'cause you don't have a whole lot of stuff to do, which is the annexation and de-annexation, which I tried to re, uh, explain in the report as to why those were added to the list, to the list. Same with building on city-owned land, because it's very, it's, it's a possibility that workforce housing might be built on city-owned land, and so that needs to be thoroughly, um, investigated as to, again, we're back to workforce housing, which is building on city-owned land. So those are things that this board needs to really look at our zoning and see if it's sufficient or not, and those, and I know that in the past, when I was on the planning board, the planning board took a lot of direction from the, the city planner. Or we found issues that the city planner had that the zoning was, had shortcomings.
Right, not from city council, but.
Not from city.
Because they hear, that's the, that's.
They're, they're the man in the front.
Right, they've got the biggest ear that's been opened and hearing everything that's coming in.
I just wanna add the clarification that this guidance from the city council isn't necessarily a, a this administration thing, it, it's actually a result of, um, and, and Al, please correct me if I misstate any of this, but it was a correction, it was a, a clarification that was provided to Al when he reached out to the government extension, and for lack of a, a better way to summarize, that he said, is the planning board a court of origin, and for lack of a better comparison, like the Supreme Court can't choose to pick and, and make rulings, and in some countries, they can, but in our country, they can't, something has to go to them. And so Al basically asked the question of the government extension, does planning board get to come and say, this is what we think we ought to work on, or can we be the source or the origin? And the clarification and the guidance that, that he got was, certainly it's an input, but they really aren't, you, before I tackled that, I would get confirmation that there's interest in moving forward before I spent the effort on it. And, and as I looked at the frustration from last year, I was like, I can see how what he said is exactly what went wrong and why I got hurt. Um, and so that's what we're trying to do, is make sure that your effort and energy is productive. Uh, Al, is there any clarification you wanna add, or did I misstate any of that?
I, I, this is the first, well, I started this a number of years ago, Jeff, I can't, is this a third year or so we've been doing that? As part of a communication to set our agendas, uh, to set priorities of, of what's important, and, and again, except with the recent thing with STRs, and also with the, with, with the lighting, um, we thought we were following the direction of the council, but we weren't really following maybe the direction of, of, of the planner, um, and that's what happened, uh, this is an attempt to make sure that doesn't happen again. And what I, again, what I'm seeing here is, particularly as Sandy re-clarified where the minimum lot size goes under the review of state, we're, we're on target for the first five or six on this list, we're, we're on target with the council. The question is, and I can do this the way we did it last time, is I said, okay, here, here are the rankings that the council agrees with, one through six, however, some other priorities of the council that we should consider are workforce housing, annexation, de-annexation, and building on city-owned land. Those weren't in the original list, but those are things that we should certainly be aware of, so to me, I've accomplished what I tried to accomplish here, um, in that we know the top five or six, and we know that there's additional ones that the council is interested in that we did not list, and those are the three I just mentioned.
Right, so there is a two-way street is what I'm seeing, right, so, so you, we had a, a prioritized list among planning boards, we got input from the council, and what I think I hear you saying, Al, is let's just, we got the top six and the addition of these others, let's just go, let's just start working.
And, and I think it's absolutely fair to, for the planning board to identify something from your position, because people come in and ask to say, hey, city council, through our rep, will, we think this is an issue, but before we go invest time and energy on it, will you check it with city council and make sure we're not about to, to charge down a street that isn't gonna yield anything?
That they don't wanna go.
And, 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 and I think that's, and that's just, that's all it is, is, uh, and that's why there's a member of council on here to, who can say, hey, this came out the city council, we saw it, there was people who are as interested in this, this is interesting in this, they wanna tackle it and charge forward with it, are we good with that, or is there any guidance we wanna give them? And it may just be, here's the boundaries, and, and, and please, yes, thank you, go do the work. The, the goal is just to avoid the situation where the right hand and the left hand aren't aware of what's going on, which the evidence supports happened last year.
So, so I guess my, my, I guess the recoil that I have is when I hear we're supposed to be taking orders from the council, because what you're saying is very different, and that's the way I understand it, it's, it's a communication. It's not, oh, you guys are just gonna, you know, this is what we think is important, and this is what you're gonna work on. So if it's a two-way street, that has value, right, and then it becomes clearer what we need to move ahead with.
Well, look what happened tonight, when we had an issue that is identified on here, but not really, the difference between modular and tiny and ADU.
Right, so.
And all of that, and that's something that, if it weren't already on here, which it is actually, and in the higher ranking as well, um, that would be something that we, I would go back to city council and say, they've, they've had an issue, actually, the building department has an issue, needs clarification,
and, and we need to add that, um, you know, is everybody okay with the, you know, adding that to the list of duties that they already have, that's seventeen issues long. And, and we might revisit that under the, you know, revisions under the state regulations.
Correct.
Under their changes, so there's nothing wrong with putting it in there, it's just.
It all lives together.
Let's get started, let's get to work.
Well, that's kind of where I was going too, i- is, you're right, Al, the first five or six, nobody's, nobody has a problem with, let's, that, that will probably take us this year.
It'll take, it'll take a while just to do those, but Jeff, what I'm suggesting is kinda what we did last year, is that we'll, we'll finalize this thing with the top five or six, and then add at the bottom, like we did last year, top priorities from council, uh, and put those three on there so we know what they are, and it's a communication thing, 'cause this is probably, this is a dynamic document, something may come up next month, it all of a sudden knocks everything down, and we gotta, a deal with it, I mean, so it's a living document, it's not cast in concrete here, I mean, right now, the priorities are good, but something may come up that may change that, and we have that flexibility, but at this point, the council and the planning board are on the same page, at least with the top five or six, what's also interesting here to me is though, which I thought was very good, was that we ranked review of STR and rev, review of the outdoor advertising pretty high, and the council ranked that pretty low, which I thought was interesting, um, and so that.
And, Al, we may, I think we talked about this one, we beat this to death, we may have gotten a different result if we had entered them separately.
Yeah, but I had revisit, we had revisit outdoor, uh, lighting as number six, and the council had.
Not, see, everybody kept calling it lighting, and everybody's like, but the advertising.
The word that, that I heard as I listened to Teresa interesting a minute ago, was I heard Teresa say, what causes me to recoil is that the council being, and being told that the planning board takes direction from the council, and I guess my response is based on Al's conversation with the Montana extension, that is actually my understanding, but I think we're, 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 we have the person drowning in the river, and the response is different of, give me your hand versus take my hand, you know, it, it, it's almost a, the, the, the end result is, yeah, I think we're there, but I think there's a commu, and I certainly think there needs to be communication, and, and, and I think even though we're ultimately taking direction, and, and, and if the conversation is take my hand versus give me your hand, I, I, it's almost, it's almost a communication style that's causing the recoil, to use your terms. Um, I, I don't think your assertion that the council takes guidance, or the planning board takes guidance from the council, I don't think is wrong, but.
It wasn't guidance, it was direction.
And, and, well, okay, takes direction from the council, I don't think that's wrong, based on what I understood, I wasn't in that conversation, Al was, but when Al reached out and said, do we take direction from the council, I think, and Al, please correct me if I'm wrong, the answer was, yes. But, but there's an appropriate way to do that, so that everybody's happy, 'cause, 'cause nobody likes, I'm the boss of you. Um, you know, you're not the boss of me is a, is a favorite phrase in my house, in a positive way.
I'm gonna stick my neck out here just a little bit, um, and, well, I'm gonna stick it out a long way. The council now, and administration now, is a different personality than it was a couple of months ago. And there was a lot of issues going on within the council that aren't there anymore, so, and, and we, we got some of the ripple effect of that. And, and, and I'm thinking that now the communication, the give and take. the give and take, at least my sense is, a heck of a lot better than it was a month ago. Or, and so, again, I think I've accomplished what we set out to accomplish here. We know where the priorities are, top six, and we know that the council wants us to consider workforce housing, annexation, de-annexation, and building on city-owned land as well. So, to me, that's nine things that are pretty important to both the council and the planning board and we can plan agendas and set priorities based on that.
And I guess in reality, there could still be, the planning board could take on short-term rentals or that was one that was in there and present it, but what we'll be missing is the shock and surprise of, oh, what do you mean, you're not interested? Because at least that was communicated upfront or outdoor advertising. If, if planning board still says, we're going to do it and we're going to present it, they can still do to do that, but you give up your right to be surprised if it's what you present is not accepted because there was fair disclosure upfront.
Fair disclosure to the council, fair disclosure to the council that it wasn't important to us, right? That's what you're saying?
Yeah. I, I guess on that, on those two issues, like one on the outdoor advertising, the reason that came forward was because similar to tonight, there was a conversation or discussion and lack of clarity in the direction, some of the direction in our outdoor advertising, especially as it related to the historic downtown overlay. So, that, that's how that discussion got started and so basically, we were looking at, probably that should have been communicated back to the council, here's a deficiency and this is what the, what planning board is looking at, this is the reason why we're looking at it. So, there was a breakdown there. On the STRs, we got direction from the council back in December to look at those recommendations from the steering, short-term rental steering committee and we did that job. It, and, and that still kind of blew up on us. So, so there, in that situation, there was a communication from the council to the planning board to look at specific issues and make recommendations back to the city council, which we did and we kind of got beat up about it. So, so that's kind of, you know, so there, so there is some.
And Teresa's right, they didn't really take the time to look at short-term rental. The two were presented together.
We waited and waited and waited.
And I think that the outdoor advertising trumped the short-term rentals had they been presented separately, but it appears that the city council has no more appetite for doing anything else to short-term rentals until we see what we've already done has taken effect and how it's working and what's going on. And we are watching it, actually, we're getting numbers of how many and, and all of those. So, they just don't have an appetite to go at it again.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that, into that conversation.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that either.
I just, I just wanted to point out, there was some, you know, there was some breakdown.
And I, and I appreciate that. And what I hear is, is the need and, and I hope, I, I have the benefit of calling on a working relationship with everybody in here and disagreeing probably with everybody in here at, at least once at some point in time. So, so I think, like I said, I'll, I'll make a commitment to try to keep those communications up. I will look to your council rep to do that and, and I will challenge your council rep in both directions to do your very darnedest to be a reporter, not an editorial. And that's a tricky thing to do. But, but I think when your fellow council members appointed you to this position, that that had an implied confidence in your ability to do that. And so, and, and you'll know, sometimes you'll say, oh, this is going to be a challenge for me and I'm just going to bite my tongue until the blood flows slowly down the back of my throat, but I think that's one of your responsibilities that you need to make, to do. Part of your job is making sure that breakdown doesn't happen.
Again, no, I totally agree.
So, hey, Jeff?
What time wasted on?
Go, go ahead, Al.
To wrap this up, what I'm going to do is, is I've made some notes here for clarification and I'll send it out to the planning board members and to the mayor to make sure that what I've written here is consistent with what this discussion was and I'm going to include a line item here that says additional items recommended from the council and I'm going to put the ones there that Sandy mentioned in her memo so that we kind of know what they are. And then, again, this is going to be a working document and, and so we can share it with the council, the planning, land use, whomever, so they kind of know where we are because I think we know what our marching orders here for the next several months are in terms of revitalization and the growth policy. I think that's going to be, I think that's going to take priority over.
And state rep.
State rep.
Yeah, that's pretty good, pretty good workload. That sounds good to me. Is that in agreement?
As long as we have the opportunity to get our numbers in the order that we put them in on instead of the orders that they're on here.
Accuracy in the reporting.
Well, I think that's what he's saying, he's just going to list out separately the top three or four that were added and then we still have our own.
I didn't draw on that, Susan, tell me that again.
They're not in the right, they're not in the order I put them in and as a result, there are some things, for example, with workforce housing, where Sandy and I would have been almost identical, but my, my number on that got changed somehow.
So, just a concern to make sure that the summary report is accurate.
Yeah.
Somewhere between the black and white copy and the color copy, the numbers changed.
Well, you can see that I used the black and white copy, but it, you know, enlarged the lines, but it still dated two, three, 24.
Now, Susan, did you say that the ones I sent you were accurate and the ones on, are not?
That's what Susan is saying, yeah.
The white page is what I had given you and then this multi-color page, they're all in different orders. There may be one or two of them that are the same, but they're, they're very much.
It's chance if they are the same.
Yeah, it's random if it is.
Anyway.
Did you resend me your order, Susan? Could you resend me your order and I'll make sure it's right?
Al, is the version that is dated February 3rd, 2024, is that the most recent version?
The most recent one, I want to make sure. I have Susan, so if she would resend me her ranking, I'll make sure I got it right.
Well, and, and she's saying that the page you're looking at is everybody's, not just yours, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Does it have a date on that page?
It says two, three, 24 and then I look over here at the other one that's multi-color and it says two, three, 24, but if you go down my numbers, there's from the top to the bottom, I've got a one on one and a four on the other, then the second one, I've got a two and there's a six on the other. Yeah, and thank you.
And I'm the only one that did, I'm the only one that did 17.
You, you need to go through and check your data.
I used the exact same file.
Well, we saw that some of the stuff didn't get.
Susan, please send me your ranking, I'll make sure it's right.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to show it, but I can send you back the white one that you sent me or I can do a pen and ink on the multi-color.
But I am, if I were a betting man, some cells were blocked and the sort was done and everything that wasn't inside of the block didn't get sorted and that's how it got rearranged. So, so I, from a technology standpoint, I can tell you exactly how this happened. It's a forensic guess, but I, I put money on it.
Yeah, I'm thinking it was something about how the spreadsheet format did something one way with some columns and something different with some other columns.
Yeah, exactly. It sorted, it sorted the first five columns, but not the last five.
Or something.
Yeah, something along those lines.
So, to clarify and bring this meeting to a close.
Yes.
What I heard, Al, is your spreadsheet is correct. The last one you sent out is, is accurate. The one that is, that got mixed up and resorted is the one that Sandy handed out tonight where the numbers shifted. Is that what I, is that what I'm hearing? I'm just trying to get some clarification that I think your copy, current latest copy is, is accurate. So, so we're working with, with a good copy there. The one that maybe needs to be checked against is, is the one that you handed out, Sandy, in terms of.
And I just used the one Al gave me.
And I'll, I'll work with Sandy from a technology standpoint.
He can, he can do techno with.
Moving on, I will send you a read summary and a, a clean copy and I'll hopefully do that in the next three or four days. I got a house full of folks here and I'm stashed away in a corner, so I'm not sure if I can get it done, but I'll get it done before the, next week.
All right, do we have, it sounds like, so you're going to add what the city council's recommendations are to your spreadsheet and resend that out at some point?
Based on what Sandy said from council.
So, I didn't, we have wrote them in.
So, moving, moving on, any staff communication? Cody or Dave?
No.
And we don't seem to have an audience anymore, so I'll bring the meeting to a close.
Thank you.
And Jeff, can you, Jeff, can you and I chat on the phone in the next couple of days about this forum and some kind of a schedule when we get together and talk about stuff?
You bet, yep.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you, Cody.
I look forward to the bill.
Are we, are we expecting to get anything or what are we doing?
Um, are you asking about from a planner's standpoint?
Yeah, are we going to have a planner's director?